To reconvene the meeting of the St. Mary's County Board of Education for Wednesday, September 25th, 2024, if everyone would please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have motion to approve the agenda?
I move approval of the agenda as presented.
Of second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? First on the agenda is the Superintendent Updike and student member of the board report.
Yeah, so I'm gonna keep my part brief because Ms. Heisler has much to share. I've been running around out in the schools visiting new teachers and seeing how their classrooms are set up. These are just a couple. Lexington Park and out at Dinerd and I was at Park Hall and I was just at Spring Ridge and Leonardtown High School. Our new teachers are really settling in. It's a really great diverse gathering of educators, some brand new to the profession, some with a great deal of experience who are moving into the area, and then some people who have other professions and they've decided that now is the time that they'd really like to be engaged in educating young people. So, a lot of fun, lot of smiling faces, a lot of really great things going on in our schools. The county commissioners recognized and had a proclamation for our upcoming 4-H Local Farmers Maryland Extension Service for our farm to school, and that starts next week? Next week? Oh my gosh, is next week October. Next week is October. So they did a really wonderful job of gathering. We live in an incredible county and there are so many things that make it special, and the one is access to some of the most delicious, 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 that's it, fresh fruit and vegetables. And it's great to see the kids when they're having their meals when they come and visit. It's very nice stuff. So, on Tuesday, they're gonna be at Leonardtown Elementary School and then on Thursday at Dinerd Elementary School. Should be a great week. We still have some opportunities, not as many opportunities. These opportunities are dwindling. Get in when you can. We do have an elementary school art, three middle and high school math positions available, two high school science, one in school intervention, two occupational therapists, two psychologists, two point eight speech-language pathologists, and two special ed educators available for instructional positions, certificated positions in our schools, and then support professionals, building service staff. We've got one of the best building service staffs and there is an opportunity to join those teams. We have seven vacancies and most of those vacancies are from building service workers being promoted into upper ranks of leadership and service within supporting services. So, it's great, but because we promote from within, every promotion creates a vacancy behind it. So there is a great opportunity for entry-level people to come into building service. Food services, six, Judy Center Family Assistant, one plumber, and I think, I think we might have found a plumber. So, that might be. So if you're a plumber and you've waited, well, still put in your application, that'd be great. Paraeducators, special education paraeducators, program analyst, secretary, opportunities to work in our offices, and two in transportation. So there are things going on in St. Mary's County. Really think about joining us. It's a great place to work. It is the end of September. It has gone by so fast. We were talking today when we had our high school principals in that we're doing our first run of grade pass backs to make sure that the schoology program works with, which means that we're five weeks in. We are five weeks into school and we're already at the midway point for the very first marking period. So, students, if you are performing the way you want to perform, keep it up. And if you find yourself at the five-week mark going, ah, you know, I could be doing better, there's still more than enough time to get in there, really lean in, and make sure that first quarter grade represents who you are academically. And with that, I'm gonna hand it over to Ms. Heisler and she's gonna tell me when to click.
All right, so as student member of the board, I'm visiting every fifth grader in the county, so every elementary school in the county, and I did my first two, Piney Point, oh, I'm sorry, I did my first two, Park Hall and Dinerd, and then my upcoming two are Piney Point and Oakville. So I'm super excited for those. And for SLAC, which is a superintendent student leadership committee, I lead that as the student member of the board, and we had our first meeting actually this week, this Monday, as the steering committee. So it was a body of students gathered together and we started planning our first meeting, and that contains people from every grade level in each high school. And so we sort of come together as a county to advise me and to advise the board, so that's super fun and awesome. As far as things that I represent, like for being the student member of the Board of Education, the St. Mary's Association of Student Councils, which I sit in on as a student member of the Board of Education, has its first general assembly on October 31st, so I'm super excited. I'm presenting a workshop about our local representatives, which is awesome.
Halloween.
And then for Maryland Association of Student Councils, which I'm a member of the executive board of because I'm the student member of the Board of Education here, we're holding Fall Leadership Conference on November 23rd, and I am also presenting a workshop about how to win your next debate. So that's super exciting. Division Five, sort of like our congressional fifth district, we are St. Mary's, Charles, and Calvert County. It's for Maryland Association of Student Councils, and it's basically made up of the student leaders of that, of those counties, and we're, we held our first caucus meeting to kind of decide what we want to do as those counties and how we want to move forward last week, which is pretty awesome. And then in my personal life, as president of Student Government Association, we're throwing homecoming in Spirit Week, and then as president of National Honor Society, we're holding inductions very, very soon. And just a personal side note, I'm super, super happy that the AP tests are paid for by the county. That's super awesome. It's definitely breaking down barriers and just making things more accessible to our students, so I love that.
Twenty-five hundred last year, pretty fantastic.
Yes. All right, so our first board visit, well, I guess not board visit, but school visit from me and the superintendent, Dr. Smith, we came in and talked to fifth graders at Park Hall Elementary. We talked about the "we hear" curriculum, so that "here" is here, engaged, approachable, and renewed, and we talked about what it means to be each of those things at the school. And then we also talked about some pretty awesome things that they do at their school. So they have a 96% daily attendance goal, which is super, super awesome, and they get a pizza party if they do that, which is really fun. They worked on active listening and they emphasized keeping a calm body, which is super important, and I definitely hadn't thought of being engaged as having a calm body before, so that was definitely very good. The kids are super excited to talk to me. I loved talking to all of them. They talked about how at the end of the year, they make tie dye shirts, they have a field day, and then I think right before Christmas break, they have a student versus staff basketball game, which is super, super fun, and they also have flag football games and a field trip to St. Mary's College, so they are doing awesome things.
Yeah, I will tell you, of the Park Hall group, and they were fun. We broke them into two different sections, so we had one classroom and one group and then another. So we got, so our very first time out, we got to perform twice. And they were, I was always, I'm worried about how they're gonna talk about being approachable, but they really did know how to be kind and friendly and the importance of a smile and don't let your face do talking, you know, be really engaged. It was, it was an impressive, it was an impressive group at Park Hall.
All right, so our next school visit, which was the very next day, was Dinerd Elementary School. And so we asked them, how are you here? And they said, so we learn because it's fun. And that was just a really great thing to hear from our kids, that they love coming to school, which is super, super important. They also have an attendance goal and they meet their attendance goal by filling in a letter of the word attendance every day that their class has perfect attendance, and they get extra recess. So that's awesome because being present in schools is super, super important. They did shout out their teachers because their teachers helped them stay engaged. And they have a bus patrol, which is pretty fun. I had a bus patrol when I was in elementary school and it was super fun and it's a great opportunity for leadership and it definitely helps them be approachable. They do a lot of fun things at their school. I think the day that we visited, they had just made oobleck slime, which I'd never heard of before, but it seems pretty awesome. They talked about a turkey bowl, an M-CAP picnic, and they actually create their own arcade games. So, super, super cool things that they're doing at Dinerd, and it was really fun to talk to them.
Can't wait for our next two.
Yeah.
And then the thirteen that follow after that. So, yeah, it's, if you, if you want to see things going right, spend some time talking to a fifth grader. They, they have a really positive outlook. They, they recognize that, that any challenge put before them, they are going to be able to meet and meet really well. And it's, it's just, it's really nice. And they're very responsive to your SMCPS "we hear." They were, they were right on board with all of that. So, thank you very much.
All right, we have recognitions tonight. I think Mrs. Bachner is pinch hitting from Mr. Burrows this evening.
I am, I'm hoping the slides are up. If not, I have words.
They are not, but they can be.
It's ten.
I go up and help, but you know what happens.
I know.
It's, it might be in the folder. That wasn't me. Oh, no.
I have words, though. I can do it.
Yeah.
I don't see it in the folder.
I don't see it in the folder.
Can you pull it up on Word docs because the?
It is in the exhibit.
It's in the.
Yeah. All right, talk amongst yourselves. We will get this. We want, we want, we, so there's two reasons why we want to do the presentation like this to my fantastic artists who are here. When we, we have your picture in there and then it gets put up on the display screen, so later on, if you're watching the video, you'll see your, your artwork and then as, as you come up and are recognized. So we don't want to, we don't want to miss out on the opportunity for you to see those, those pieces of artwork.
Because especially family far and wide, they can view it later.
Exactly. We're making memories here, for goodness sakes.
Absolutely.
There it is.
Do you know how to do it? Look at that.
Over. No. What? What are you saying? Yeah, it doesn't like it. Open up directly from that. It's Microsoft. All right, so let's go to Google Chrome. I will be.
The clicker.
Yeah, so. Because it's not going into a present mode.
There you go. Most.
Nope. Do you know how to get this out of that? All right, you figure it out. You're gonna be the official clicker now.
So have a seat.
Right.
There you go. All right. Then you just page down.
Yeah, because it's in Adobe, so it's not in.
Is there a presenter mode? I can't.
No, it's in Adobe, so you're gonna have to page down to the next page.
Are you good?
Yep.
There you go. All right, oh, we had a preview.
Good evening, board members, Dr. Smith, and of course, our student artists. Mr. Burrows was not able to be with us this evening. He had a little fender bender in Baltimore while attending an MSD meeting this afternoon. He is just fine, but was not able to get back, so I'm your pin chair for tonight. And I'm very glad to be here. I'm Lisa Bachner, Chief Academic Officer, and he has not missed one of these events in nine years, so he really did not want to miss this either. So, tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate our fine arts program by acknowledging and showing our appreciation to those students that are benefiting from our program and benefiting all of us with the artwork they've shared with us. For the past few months, we've had the opportunity to look and admire the students' artwork as it has graced this room as well as the hallway leading to the superintendent's office. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Smith to join me at the podium to recognize these student artists as well as their school, their principal, and their art teacher. When I call a student's name, please come to the podium to receive your certificate from Dr. Smith. Once all the students have been recognized, we will take a group picture to include students with their artwork, which is in the front, and then we'll provide some time for parents to get pictures with school staff if they are here and individual photos. Are you ready?
Sounds like a plan. I like it.
The first student artist we have, advance the slide for me, is Julia Bagaporo from Greenview Knolls Elementary School. Her art teacher is Mr. Lacy, and her principal is Ms. Berthium. Is Julia here? Come on up, Julia. And Julia's artwork is titled Norway Sky Wolf. Lovely. Our next student artist is Amina Hall from Lexington Park Elementary School. Her art teacher is Angelica Ballard, and her principal is Becky Scowell, and I do not believe Amina is here with us. Is she today?
But we do have the art teacher.
We do have the art teacher.
So Ms. Ballard's gonna come up and she's, I'm gonna present this on behalf. I need you to stay up.
And I know Amina is not here, Ms. Ballard, but what grade is Amina in? That artwork is pretty amazing. First grade. I saw her picture and she was really teeny tiny, so I wonder. Okay. Our third artist to acknowledge tonight is J.C. Lee from Esperanza Middle School. Her teacher, art teacher is Josh Carter, and her principal is Ms. Consalvo. And I bet you can't guess her title, which is Frankenstein. And J.C., if you'd like to sell this artwork, I'm interested. It's Halloween time. It is. And our final artist that we're going to celebrate tonight is Joseph Stoner from Park Hall Elementary School. His art teacher is Heath McCracken, and his principal is Mr. Drenzo. And his is titled Sunset at Camp. Very good. Dr. Smith?
Just very quickly, do any of you want to comment or share your thoughts, dreams, aspirations, motivations behind your incredible work? Okay, that's fine, because you are such talented artists, what you create speaks for itself. I just want to say thank you so much for sharing your talents with us and the Board of Education. When we come here and we have our meetings, and sometimes the meetings might not be as interesting as all things are, and so your, your eye drifts away from the people talking, and when you look upon, say, Frankenstein or a summer camp fills us with joy. So thank you very much for sharing all of that with us. All right, so with that, I think we're gonna.
We're gonna do photos, I think?
We'll do a, we need a photo of all of them.
Right.
We have a ten-minute recess.
And a ten-minute recess, and you all are welcome to get your art and take it home with you today.
Okay, we do have a public hearing this evening. Do we have public comment?
Yes, we have to read. And the first being Mr. Barrett Brooks.
Right. I will read this as Barrett makes his way. So everyone signed up for public comment, eat these same rules. The Board welcomes public input on policies and issues affecting our schools. We take this time to listen and consider, but not to comment. This is not an appropriate forum for negative comments or criticisms of individual staff or students. Concerns about individual staff members that cannot be resolved at the level closest to the situation should be directed to the superintendent. Uh, let's see. Additionally, the Board sits as an appellate body in both student and employee appeals. We cannot comment on or have prior knowledge of a case that would influence our ability to deliberate. The Speaker must sign at the beginning of the meeting. Public comment is limited to three minutes per speaker. You may not yield your time to someone else. If you have written comments, you can provide them to Kim to go into our minutes and Ms. Short keeps the timer.
Okay. Um, good evening, members of the Board. Superintendent Scott Smith. Uh, my name is Barrett Brooks and I'm a parent of a student at Chopticon High School. I'm speaking tonight to address the recent school shooting threat. Uh, first and foremost, I applaud Principal Mark Perner, his administrative team, and the Sheriff's Department for using the schools, uh, the school system's policies and procedures to quickly find and decisively address the incident. Uh, per the email communication sent out by Mark Perner, the student claimed it was a joke. I want to make it clear that in a community like ours, where we have experienced the tragedy of a fatal school shooting firsthand, this cannot and must not be trivialized. Uh, this is not a joke. Uh, in St. Mary's County, we live with the memory of the Great Mills High School shooting. A tragedy that forever changed our community. I was working at the tech center that day, helping process the evacuation of Great Mills students and reuniting them with their families. I will never forget the looks of confusion, fear, and loss on the faces that day and the days and years that followed. In this context, any threat of violence, whether intended as a joke or not, carries real weight. We cannot afford to dismiss it as harmless. Every threat, every so-called prank chips away at the sense of safety and security that students and staff need to teach, learn, and most importantly, feel safe. This is not a joke. If we allow this type of behavior to go unchecked, we risk normalizing it. We cannot let our schools become environments where threats of violence are treated as jokes, or worse, where students feel emboldened to make these threats because they believe there will be no real consequences. If these threats become commonplace, we erode the foundation of trust and safety that our schools are built on. How many jokes will it take for students and staff to stop taking it seriously? What happens when and if they do? It's not just about this one incident. It's about preventing the next one and making it clear that this is not a laughing matter. This is not pulling a fire alarm. This is not stirring up, uh, sorry. This is stirring up decades of fear to terrorize and torment others. To make light of death and the genuine reality that many in our community are afraid to send their kids to school. This kind of threat affects everyone in our community. Uh, how, yeah, uh, it creates fear, anxiety, and distraction for students who should be focused on learning. Oh, I'm sorry, I just got a few more words. Uh, on students, uh, who should be learning and teachers who should be focused on teaching. How do you pass a test, take good notes, or teach an excellent lesson when the building is on lockdown? We have an opportunity here to send a clear and powerful message by holding the people involved fully accountable, using the full extended law and school discipline, we can show everyone in the entire community that things like this cannot be brushed aside. Uh, I have complete faith that Chopticon High School and Board of Education will take all necessary steps to handle this in the most professional and safe manner possible. Thank you.
The next speaker is Brandy Edelman.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Board members and Dr. Smith. I'm gonna be quick. Mine is just budget related. Uh, my name is Brandy Edelman. I'm from Mechanicsville. I come to speak to you as a concerned citizen. As you are aware, the Superintendent of Schools and Staff initiate the annual budget process in October and bring the proposed budget to the Board in January. The fundamental problem is not knowing the amount of additional funding available from the state and county. Consequently, a proposed budget more than maintenance of effort funding is nothing more than a wish list, often requiring a confrontation with the county commissioners for increased funding. That said, I suggest the Board direct the Superintendent to initially propose a budget that does not exceed maintenance of effort funding and provide an addendum identifying and prioritizing spending contingent upon the receipt of additional funding. The existing process has the appearance of the school administration directing the Board's management rather than vice versa. Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Penrod.
Good evening. Sarah Penrod, President of the Education Association of St. Mary's County. September fifteenth through August, or through October fifteenth is recognized as National Hispanic Heritage Month. This is the perfect time for us to celebrate the diversity of our St. Mary's County staff and students. Over the last several years, we have seen our county's Hispanic population grow exponentially. We have over three hundred and eighty Spanish-speaking ELL students and probably another three hundred Spanish speakers that don't fall under that umbrella. As President, I've met with many of our Spanish-speaking staff members and as a Spanish teacher, I worked alongside some of the best. While sometimes language barriers bring unique challenges, our schools are richer for the cultural diversity brought by our Spanish-speaking students and colleagues. I'm grateful to work for a Board of Education that makes it a priority to ensure all students and staff feel safe to be themselves and proud of where they come from. My hope is that SMCPS can continue to set that gold standard. Of course, you know, I can't come here without talking about all of the work we are jointly tackling over the next several months. The blueprint comes with lots of legislation that feels like it'll never end and it probably never will, but so much of this work must be negotiated. And as President, I always recognize how lucky we are to have the working relationship that we do. Collective bargaining between ESMC and SMCPS is done in a productive environment. And even when we don't always exactly agree, we do recognize that both sides have respectfully come together under the same goal, to do what's best for students and staff. I'm tying all of this into Hispanic Heritage Month with a union history lesson. Our union has much to contribute to the efforts of Cesar Chavez, a Mexican-American civil rights activist who organized the first farm workers' union. Through his efforts, they achieved dignity, respect, fair wages, medical coverage, pension benefits, and most importantly, the rights to collective bargaining. His dedication to social justice extended beyond labor rights. He emphasized the importance of education and community empowerment. He is quoted, "We need to help students and parents cherish and preserve the ethnic and cultural diversity that nourishes and strengthens this community and this nation." And preservation of one's own culture does not require contempt or disrespect for other cultures. Chavez reminds us that there's no turning back. When we stand together, we can create lasting change. I look forward to working with SMCPS this year and beyond, building a stronger school system together. Si se puede.
All right. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Today's consent agenda consists of the approval of minutes of September eleventh, twenty twenty-four, personnel, teachers, personnel, administrative, and supervisory, and confidential employees. With that, I move approval of the consent agenda as presented.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. We have two action items this evening. The first one, well, both of them are Ms. Howell's. First one is Green Holly Elementary School roof and HVAC system renovation project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Yes. Okay, so tonight, um, I'm here for a budgetary approval for a state share of the Green Holly project. Um, this is for the roof and the HVAC. And the only reason that we're here tonight is because the state funded the program through, um, the Healthy School Initiative, which is outside of the normal budget cycle. So, the project had an original budget and it stays the same of sixteen point seven million dollars. Of that, nine million, one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars is state funding. Uh, the project was originally put in in FY twenty-four and received its, um, local share in that, um, project. But in May of that year, we submitted for the state share. It wasn't approved until July, which means it was outside of both the twenty-four and the twenty-five CIP. What this allows us to do is enter the state share into the FY twenty-five CIP and gives us the budget authority to move forward with using that funding. Uh, we will be getting the remaining portion of the state funding, um, this fiscal year in twenty-six. So all we're asking for is the budgetary authority to use the state funding that was provided outside of the FY twenty-four and twenty-five CIP cycle. So if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Hannah?
I don't have any questions, but I think that this is definitely a super important project for all the students at Green Holly. Um, and I thank you for keeping attention to how all of our budgeting works because I know that I don't understand it and, uh, helping them, um, get their roof and their AC, so, thank you.
Yeah, on that note, I will be asking yet again for the state to back up this process to align with a traditional CIP schedule so that we don't line up with this situation again.
Yeah.
I have no questions. Thank you.
No, thank you.
No, thank you.
I'm fine. Thank you.
I think it's just frustrating, as we've spoken before, about the fact that, um, there are so many moving pieces in terms of how capital projects are handled now as opposed to how they had been over many, many, many years. Um, and, uh, I think it's a learning curve for everyone, the IAC included. Um, I'm hoping that the IAC, um, un- comes to understand the process and why it is, it has been this way, um, and, and the funding mechanisms and that, that it, they can realign things as it should be. So thank you for keeping on top of this. Um, this is, as, um, Hannah stated, a very important project, um, one we need to move forward, so, thank you.
Anyone else? So, Kim, this has to go from here. It goes to the commissioners of St. Mary's County?
Yes, because what this will do is, um, by your action tonight, you grant us the budget authority to have it in the FY twenty-five CIP detail sheet. Um, we will go to the commissioners and ask for the same thing so that it shows up as an FY twenty-five.
Okay, so whoever's going to make the motion, we probably need to add that onto the, um, onto the action.
Oh, that goes to that for you to the-
It, it'll-
Yeah, that we have to, we need to forward it to the commissioners.
To the commissioners.
Okay.
All right, so, floor is open. Who would like to make that motion?
I could do it. I move that the Board of Education approve the budget authority for nine million, one hundred and seventy thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars in State Healthy School Facilities Fund for Green Holly Elementary School Roof Building A and HVAC Building B Systemic Renovation Project and forward it to the county commissioners.
For their approval.
For their approval.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you. Good job. All right. Ms. Howell, now you have the budget amendment for Great Mills High School, the chiller replacement.
Hold on one second. We lost it there for a second.
We are making money saying.
So, the next, um, item that we have is for a budget amendment to fund the Great Mills High School chiller replacement. Um, the Great Mills High School chiller, um, has been in operation for twenty-six years. Life expectancy of a normal chiller is twenty-five. Um, and we have been experiencing in, um, increasing frequency of failures and repairs, um, and associated cost. Um, and currently, the chiller is inoperable and we do have a temporary chiller in place to provide, um, cooling for the school. Um, the replacement will include the existing chilled water plant, including the chiller, cooling tower, pumps, controls, chemical treatment systems, refrigerant monitoring, and purge system, and all of the associated piping. Um, the new chiller, because we only have one at, um, Great Mills High School, uh, will have two compressors, two or more compressors. And what that will mean for us moving forward is that if we were to lose one compressor, we would still have a functional chiller for the remainder of the school. We do have some funding that we had received previously. Um, when we did that project, we were ready to go, is when we did lose the chiller at Chopticon High School. So, some of the funding from the Great Mills project was deferred at that time to, uh, meet the need at, um, Chopticon High School. Um, based on the new design, we have, uh, estimated that the project will be about one point eight. They're currently getting the approvals as we speak now. Um, we have remaining, um, funds, a little close to one point one million, remaining in that project. Um, we did take a look with design and construction at all of the projects that we could potentially, um, utilize that funding and we identified the projects that are listed there that are at completion or nearing completion and we identified the remaining seven hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. Um, we do have thirty-seven cents here. The budget amendment that came back from the county was for even seven hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars. If the approval is given tonight, we will need to go over to the commissioners. The funding will get returned to their FIN account and then we would ask for money out of the FIN account.
Simple, right?
Uh, this really, I mean, I do have to give, um, credit to design and construction. It is due to their due diligence on managing our projects that we are able to solve this problem ourselves, um, to be able to identify the funding that we need to compete, keep this project moving forward.
More often than not, our projects come in on time or ahead of time and we have s- some, with the projected amount, we do have some money left over, which is, which is great.
When you look at those numbers and percentage of the total value, they're, they're small. But we are doing everything we can to bring those projects in under budget and this allows us the opportunity to fund this project.
Because it is a priority, because Great Mills currently has a temporary chiller that we are renting and carries a cost with it and we need to, we need to have a solution.
And everything we are doing is to, to hopefully get this to the point that we can replace it. Um, the, the new design is something that is a little more accessible to get and we should be able, if everything goes right, to have this in place for next cool week season.
Right.
In the spring.
It's kinda like looking for money in the couch cushions.
Hannah, do you have any questions?
Uh, no, I don't have any questions. Just to back up, um, your point, I know that a lot of people that go to Great Mills have told me that like, the temporary chiller is a, a truck. It's not like a chiller, so. Definitely very urgent, um, project, but thank you for working and I feel like, hopefully if we get this passed, then by spring and summer, they'll have the chillers, so that is awesome.
Um, the temporary chiller, how long has that been in operation? How many months?
Twenty years.
It was, it's, it's-
It has been the, a good portion of the spring and summer.
Yeah.
When that went out. I don't have the actual date. Um, I'd have to ask Dr. Beavers for that.
And, uh, you're renting this or you're renting this car?
Yes.
What are you spending a month on that, do you know? I know it's expensive.
Oh, no, no, it's, it's a-
It's very expensive.
Yeah, it's in the hundreds of thousands of dollars by the time we're done with this, yeah. Yeah, and we didn't-
Something, obviously, we wanna try to avoid, of course.
Yes, so one of the things that we did when we evaluated the budget, we did look at the opportunity, were we gonna be able to get it done in time? And that's where all the due diligence has been, trying to get the design moving so that while I was trying to obtain the money, we would be ready with IAC approval because it is over a million dollars. It requires state approval even though they're not participating. Um, so all of those approvals are in place. We've talked to distributors to make sure we can, um, because we, in one scenario, we had included the cost of the temporary chiller. Um, to try to use-
The life cycle on the existing chiller is twenty-five years.
Yes.
Uh, wasn't, why wasn't there action done last year for replacement?
So we have had the, the funding that we had, like I said, we had to divert. Um, maintenance does an amazing job of trying to keep things moving. Um, and when we look at this in terms of everything else, we thought we had the time. Um, it was, you know, working and you never know when they're gonna go. One minute they can be fine and then they, they're not.
Understand that.
Um, so in keeping with the scheme of everything, we were trying to get into the next budget cycle to, to get it funded. Um, it did not last long enough.
Uh, my last question is, you mentioned gonna have two chillers. And if one fails, um, my question would be, what percentage of, of the space would one chiller, uh, facilitate in the school or, um, will one chiller replace all of the space for cooling?
We have one chiller at Great Mills High School. We will remain with one chiller. The, the difference, the difference is it will have multiple compressors, so that if one compressor fails, while we are trying to replace that compressor, we still have a functional chiller.
I got you.
It will, it will be strained at that point, um, but it will only have to be replacing a compressor versus the whole chiller.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the air, the unit, well, I don't know anything about the chiller, so it, it'll be done being used after we don't need it for air.
So in the very near future, sometime in October, um, they wait till the fifteenth and there's a complicated scale of morning and evening temperatures. Um, but as soon as we get into the heating season, we should have this out to bid. We should have the information and the chiller can be replaced while we're in the heating mode.
Okay.
So the goal would be that during the heating season, we would replace the chiller and then it would be available for us next spring.
Very good. Thank you, Miss Ollie.
Thanks. Mary?
Thank you.
Um, the funds we're going to be using that, um, have been recovered from other projects that you're closing out, um, the majority of, if not all of our capital, um, projects are done with a budget plus a contingency. Um, just sort of a ballpark, 'cause I, I didn't, this question didn't occur to me until just now. Um, the majority of these funds, are they coming from, um, leftover contingency money?
Yes.
Rather than necessarily the larger share coming from the project itself?
So one of two things could have happened. Um, we always estimate our projects to the best of our ability. There are times when we come into, um, a word of contract that we had a really good bid day and there could be project money left in addition to the contingency.
Okay.
So on a, on average, we tried to do a seven to eight percent project contingency on a, on typically like a roof or an HVAC. Depending on the age of that facility, it may be greater because we don't know if we're gonna run into something that we have to abate. Um, so it could be a combination of it was a really good bid day and we had some residual funding left over from the amount that we had requested or, and/or it could be the contingency.
Okay.
But we are not in any way pulling from a project. No, projects are being decreased, um, in what we are accomplishing.
Right, and you've often spoken of the fact that because of the age of the buildings, um, and you'll, you'll go into a project and only after starting to deconstruct do you realize that there's, um, the project is going to be more involved than had been, um, noted. And often, we're using, um, specialist entities that have looked at these projects to determine what's going forward. And so it's, it's not that anyone hasn't done their due diligence in determining the scope of the project, but rather, um, things are, are, you know, when there are layers- and you're pulling back those layers, you, um, often find things you did not anticipate.
And when you look at our buildings, um, we have buildings like, uh, we were talking about Captain Walter Francis Duke. You know, abatement isn't something we have to worry about based on the age of when that building was built. A school such as Great Mills was built in the fifties and sixties and added on to in the seventies or eighties and the two thousands or whenever. So you have to account for what can be there in some of the older sections that maybe didn't get addressed during an earlier renovation.
Right. So I just want the public to understand, um, a little m- more about why these monies are here.
Well, and understand the scope. We're, we're talking about a percent, a fraction of the overall scope.
Yes.
And this, every single project that comes in under budget, eventually, whatever's left gets reverted to the FIN.
Right.
And then once reverted to the FIN, the FIN grows. The county does the exact same thing. And then oftentimes, we'll go back and say, we've, we've given you back four hundred thousand dollars and then can we have that? And this is really what this is, but this is a gathering. This is like going through every single project that we had out there. And, you know, you know, five hundred and seventy dollars here and five thou- I mean, this is, you know, we're, we're talking about millions of dollars. This is, we are really trying to do, we s- sent staff back, try to figure out every single possible way that we can get to the amount of money that we need to so we can replace the HVAC, um, the chill, and everything at Great Mills before we get into a cooling season again because otherwise, we're gonna end up continuing to rent a unit and, and so that's just money that we're throwing away.
Exactly. So, and, and you've done this before, Ms. Howell. You've brought us projects where, um, you've called together, um, uh, remaining funds.
And we did ask, um, prior to, to looking at these individual projects, we did have a conversation with the county. Their FIN is, um, their, their level that they have in the FIN was not sufficient to cover this. So we had made that request, um, as well in partnership with them, um, and just looked at all of the options. These projects, many of them are coming to a close, um, like for instance, Diner, um, Park Hall. Some of these projects are definitely coming to an end and we would have reverted the funds or addressed another concern we had with those remaining funds.
Thank you very much.
Uh, I just did want to add, echo what, uh, Dr. Smith said about, in this particular case, uh, I can understand if you have a feeling that your chiller is operational, you can go beyond its life. But at the same time, and this is why I asked the question earlier, about the cost of temporary cooling.
Yeah.
Uh, because I've, I've experienced this. It can be very, very expensive. So it's sort of a risk benefit analysis that you ought, you have to take. And, um, so it, it's, it takes a conscious efforts to, to weigh those, those two alternatives. Do I let a system go longer and what are the risks if there's a failure?
Now, if we go back to the presentation I did two weeks ago when we were talking about the capital improvements program, we currently have in our CIP half of the roof and half of the HVAC projects that we need. What you are gonna notice is when I bring you the local CIP in December, that the critical in the programmatic is how we're trying to bridge that gap because we know we have to continue to keep the systems up and running. And that's why you're gonna see chiller projects coming up.
Yeah.
Um, we're currently right now in the process of working with the stadium authority and we'll be bringing it to you next month for the next round of Built to Learn, which will be chillers at Margaret Brent and the Forest Center. So we're looking at every opportunity we have from funding sources to maintain these systems. Um, and it's something we're gonna have to do for the next foreseeable future is look at how we're gonna keep HVAC systems running longer, make them last longer in addition to our roofs. So those are conversations. We just had a conversation this, um, afternoon about that. How, how can we continue to get more added value, um, out of our systems by infusing some money into, um, systemic kind of small renovations to make them last longer?
That's good stuff.
Okay, may I have a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the transfer of seven hundred, nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents from existing capital projects to the commissioners of St. Mary's County's FIN twenty-five Reserve Capital Improvements Project Account and request the use of seven hundred, nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars and thirty-seven cents for the Great Mills High School chiller replacement.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
The motion is carried.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We do not have any information items this evening. Our next board meeting will be on Wednesday, October ninth.
In the evening.
In the evening with executive session beginning at five PM and the open meeting beginning at six PM. And with that, we are adjourned.